This meeting of the Gadsden City Council now come to order to Chair Colorado City Clerk Ivan Nelson for the roll call.
Councilman Harris.
Here.
Williams.
Here.
Avery.
Here.
Eccles.
Here.
Stewart.
Here.
Cannon.
Here.
Reed.
Here.
We have a quorum present, our meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask David Lawson to lead the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we're thankful that you've allowed us to see another new day. It is bright and beautiful and we ask that you have your hand involved in all lives and in all decision making for the benefit of Gadsden and our surrounding communities. We ask that your hands be involved with events that are happening in the Middle East right now. We ask that you continue to have your hands over U.S. Representatives and soldiers who are promoting not just peace here but peace abroad. We will be ever thankful and grateful to give you the honor, praise, and glory in your Son Jesus' name. We ask these things. Amen.
Amen. Our Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You're about to get down. Chairman, entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the work session and the city council meeting held on July 27.
So moved.
Second. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
Chairman, entertain a motion to ratify payment of the accounts for the week of July the 18th through the 24th.
So moved.
Second. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Proclamation, Mayor.
I'd like to ask Ms. Anita McBurnett, Director, Marshall County EMA, and current President of the Alabama Association of Emergency Managers, to come up, please. This award is in recognition for the Shelter Etowah Program, which is currently made up of 15 community facilities that include area-wide churches, Gadsden Public Library, community centers, and FEMA-approved community safe rooms. This program was initiated by the Gadsden Etowah County EMA in collaboration with the Simple Pixel Media and Emergency Management Department of Jacksonville State University. All of these entities, including the community shelter personnel, had a significant role in assisting the EMA in the development, implementation, and continued operation of this program, which enhances the ability of residents in Etowah County to locate adequate temporary shelter during forecast weather incidents. This program is computer-based and provides residents the following information: physical location, visual landmark, whether facilities are open or closed at a maximum capacity, whether the facility accepts pets, and the facilities that are ADA compliant. JSU provided the expertise in developing the app for both Android and iPhone, which provide residents with the ability to find shelter information on the go. JSU also provided Gadsden Etowah County EMA with artwork used on each of the 20 portable sidewalk roadway signs that assist the motoring public when seeking these shelters. Dr. Ryan, Director of JSU's Emergency Management Department, was instrumental in having the published in the International Newsletter, which reaches the emergency management discipline worldwide. As a result of these efforts, this program is being held as a pilot program for other EMAs throughout Alabama and elsewhere. For their work in assisting Gadsden Etowah County EMA, JSU's Emergency Management Department has received the International Association of Emergency Managers 2014 Technology and Innovation Division II Award by the USA Council of IAEA for its development of the Shelter Etowah Mobile Application. The award will be presented at the annual conference to be held November 14th through the 19th in San Antonio, Texas. Now I turn it over to Ms. McBurnett.
Council members, it's indeed an honor to be here today on behalf of the Alabama Association of Emergency Managers to recognize the great work done by the Gadsden and Etowah County EMA Office and that of JSU. It's always wonderful when some of our own puts together a program that reaches out to the public and makes it easier for them to find locations for safe havens and safe places of refuge in time of storms. Unfortunately, a lot of people do not plan ahead as to where they need to go, so this app's very helpful when we do have those severe weather events to help the public find a location nearby to them that they can go to and seek safe shelter. We have several different awards in the association, one of them of which is the mitigation program for which your EMA program has been nominated for and did receive, from a unanimous vote of the association, to receive the mitigation program of the year award for a large county. And it's with great honor that I would like to present this plaque now to Mr. Bryant and his staff in JSU. Congratulations, Mike, Dr. Bryant, and all this great wonderful staff that you have here, and IAEA for being recognized. Ma'am, sir? I'll turn it over to you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Would you like a...
I just want to quickly say, I want to commend the staff, especially Michael Emerson, who initiated this program and did a lot of the hard work as far as this program is concerned. Also thankful with JSU for the help that they give us here in this county. It's amazing what they've done for us over the past years. They provide us with interns, they provide us with their expertise at JSU as far as some of the processes that we do, and we really appreciate what they do. Saves the city a lot of money, we need to appreciate them for that. The staff did an outstanding job, all of them. Work hard, we had a lot of people participating out in the community to make this happen, and we're really seeking a goal of having a adequate shelter within five miles of every 104,000 people in Etowah County. We don't like a whole lot reaching that goal. Hopefully by the end, maybe of this year, that we'll reach that goal. Thank you. Dr. Ryan, I think someone should have something to say, too. Thank you.
Yes, I would just like to say thank you, Mike, and your staff, and Dr. Islam from Jacksonville State University, and to Anita. I wanted everybody here to know just how special your EMA program is. Gadsden Etowah EMA is a model organization. It is one of the most progressive in the state of Alabama, if not the country. It's been recognized not only for its mitigation efforts but also for community resiliency and for building very strong partnerships with volunteer organizations like the United Way. When we first heard about this program, Shelter Etowah, we were very excited. Not only did we know what a great service it is to your community, but we also recognized just how bold it was to designate places of safe haven and to make those aware, people in the public, aware of these things, and we thought we could add some value by collaborating. And the spirit of collaboration is always a good thing. Communication and collaboration is a hallmark of our department, and it's one of the things that has brought us closer to the Gadsden Etowah EMA. So I just want to say thanks once again to Mike for allowing us the pleasure and the honor of working closely with him and his staff, and I think the recognition is definitely due to them for all the good work that they do. Again, you have a model organization within your community. Thank you very much.
At this time, I'd like to ask Dr. Ed Miller, Superintendent of Gadsden City Schools, to come up. We have, I guess you'd say, a pleasant surprise. Our school system, we've, the council and the mayor's office has worked together the last eight years since I've been here and all these guys have, and we've been able to put about $13 million in the school system, which is the most important thing we have right here. Jobs are important, but if we don't have a trained workforce, we can't recruit industry. But we refinanced a bond issue on the school. The term is the same, the payment is lower, and we're able to get some money out of that, and we're giving the school system $100,000 to go towards anything that I guess that you feel that you need to put it toward. Dr. Miller, I know you've got a few projects, ain't you? So I'll let you talk right now.
Yes, sir. Actually, in talking with Shane, it's designated, I think, for technology. I was at a meeting recently, and, you know, that's, in education, that's the buzzword, you know, what we're using and how we're using technology and how kids are utilizing, et cetera. So they were going to demonstrate in the building, and they wanted all the administrators to, you know, go online and do this little neat little thing. And, of course, when all the administrators, and there really weren't but about 120, all the superintendents actually, we went online and tried to go online, and obviously, at that time, we couldn't get online because everybody was doing it at one time. Because one of the things with any technology you don't have is the infrastructure. You know, you don't have the Wi-Fi and the availability, and the state of Alabama, though they were responsible for educating kids, has given, since I've been superintendent, zero dollars to technology. If the city council and city of Gadsden hadn't been working with us and providing not just this additional $100,000, but an allocation of about $150,000 every year for technology, we wouldn't have technology in Gadsden City Schools. So I think, you know, they deserve an applause, and we thank y'all for the gift, really, the gift, providing some technology, need a lot more, but we'll continue to work toward that to Gadsden City Schools. So thank y'all for what y'all do. As I mentioned, it's not just, it's just not computers and iPads and things like that. This $100,000 go a long way toward the infrastructure and providing assistance at our schools so that we can get online and utilize this technology in the classroom. So again, you're giving us $100,000 this year, but you also provide, anybody doesn't know that, that provide about $150,000 annually that we don't get from anywhere else. We wouldn't have another dime for technology if it wasn't for that. So thank you, Mayor, and thank you, city council, for those technology dollars.
Okay. Okay, unfinished business. An ordinance conveying property at 13 Hersberg Circle to April Usher and Richard Norris. This ordinance was presented last week for the first reading. The city community development department accepted sealed bids for the property, and the highest bid was $6,000. Chairman, entertain a motion to adopt this ordinance.
So moved.
Second. Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
B is a resolution ordering abatement of use of this on property located at 1031 Fourth Avenue in District 5. The last known owners are Lee G. Cornish and Thomas Cornish. This resolution was tabled for 30 days on June 24th. What's the pleasure of the council?
Mr. President, on the recommendation of the building department, I'd like to ask for another 30-day table.
Second. Is there any discussion?
No.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to table the resolution in additional 30 days, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to table for 30 days.
A resolution appointing member to the beautification board. This appoints Todd Brown for a term expire in July 31st, 2017. Chairman, entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Ten, as a resolution authorizing agreement with Rosetta Productions for the use of the Pittman Theater on November 15th, 2014, for a performance of The Varied Christmas, and the payment will be 50% of the ticket sales. Chairman, entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second. Is there any discussion?
I'm not sure that there's a production, that there's a local person participating in that. Can you give us the details? Someone, oh yeah, Kay, I'm sorry. I didn't see you out there. Can you come around and just talk about it, if that's okay?
Well...
I like to...
She's going to probably be next on the program anyway.
I thought, let me, I just really...
If she won the toss, it's which one?
Doris Collier, and there's another local person in this play, in this movie as well. It's kind of like a Hallmark movie or a Lifetime movie where everybody lives happily ever after, and Doris contacted me. I put her in charge or in touch with Parks and Recreation, and we got in charge with Lee about this. It's going to be, I think, just a fun day at the Pittman on November 15th. I'm not sure the times are there, but Doris Collier is the one that's my contact person with this, and she is from here and does have a part in that movie.
Okay. Don't be nice when people know that.
New businesses in new...
We got a vote on it.
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Okay. New businesses in new business.
Mr. President, I'll start with a resolution that I would like to ask for unanimous consent to consider today. It is a resolution endorsing two nominations of Gadsden natives to the Alabama Sports Hall of Fame.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today under new business, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Moved to adopt.
Second. Is there any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President, at this time, I would call on the city clerk, please, to read the resolution for us so that we will know exactly what we're doing.
Yes.
Yes, the whole thing.
Whereas Warren Smith and Solomon Hughes Senior have been nominated to the Alabama Sports Hall of Fame, whereas Warren Smith and Solomon Hughes Senior are both natives of Gadsden, Alabama, and whereas Warren Smith started playing golf at the age of 11, won his first match at the age of 16, set a new amateur record of 31 at the Gadsden Country Club at the age of 18, and won the 25th Annual Buvor County Country Club Invitational in Montgomery at the age of 19. Whereas Warren Smith is a member of the Colorado Golf Hall of Fame and the PGA of America Golf Professional Hall of Fame, and held a PGA Tour record with seven consecutive birdies. Whereas in 2009, Outskirts Press published a book about Warren's career, which is titled, "The Pro's Pro: Warren Smith Golf Professional, Lessons on Life and Golf from the Old Pro at Cherry Hills Country Club," Outskirts Press, 2009. And whereas Warren Smith was named the PGA Golf Professional of the Year in 1973, and was awarded a red jacket and honorary lifetime membership from Cherry Hills Country Club, a distinction that had only been conferred upon President Dwight D. Eisenhower and Arnold Palmer at that time. Whereas Solomon Hughes Senior, known as Jip by his friends, was a great golfer and gentleman. Solomon Hughes grew up in Gadsden, Alabama, and learned to play golf by caddying. Whereas Solomon Hughes Senior, a black man, became a top player on the United Golfers Association Tour, and later played an important role in ending segregation on the PGA Tour. Whereas Solomon Hughes Senior was featured in a magazine article, "Caucasians Only: Solomon Hughes, the PGA and the 1948 St. Paul Open Golf Tournament," by Thomas B. Jones from Minnesota History, "The Quarterly of the Minnesota Historical Society," the winner 2003-4 edition. Whereas Solomon Hughes Senior was a good friend of Joe Louis, who was a member of the ASHOF, and gave him golf lessons while Louis was stationed at Fort McClellan. Mr. Hughes later won the Joe Louis Open in 1945. Now therefore be it resolved that the city of Gadsden, Alabama, through its council and its mayor, does unanimously and enthusiastically endorse the nominations of Warren Smith and Solomon Hughes Senior to the Alabama Sports Hall of Fame.
Thank you very much.
Call for the vote.
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Any other new business?
Mr. President, I have one item here. It's authorizing a one-time lump sum payment to pensioners and their beneficiary in accordance with the Act 2014-429.
Second.
Okay.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today under new business, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
The discussion is, we passed a couple of weeks ago, a resolution giving benefits to retirees, and we discovered that there's two sets of retirees. There are pensioners and there are retirees, and I'm not sure what's the difference, but they explained it to us. And the difference is, police and firemen are pensioners as opposed to retirees, and I don't know how they give them that designation. But at any rate, this is to make up the difference, to make sure that those individuals receive the same as the retirees did.
Moved to adopt.
Yeah. Make a motion, we'll adopt.
Second. Any further discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Abstained.
We have two abstentions. Motion carries to adopt.
Okay, is any other?
I have one, Mr. President. Like to ask for unanimous consent, please. It's a resolution authorizing agreement between the city of Gadsden and Etowah County for the paving of North 29th Street, which is in District 6, and amounts $40,000, and we're so grateful for the Etowah County Commissioner helping us on this, Carolyn Parker. She was one that graciously said she would help us with this project here.
Second. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today under new business, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move to adopt, please.
Second. Any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Any other new business?
Yeah, Mr. President, I have one. It's a resolution 188, authorizing first amendment to lease agreement and, well, it's with southern land for antenna and related building space.
Second.
Like to ask for unanimous consent.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today under new business, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Yeah, move to adopt.
Second. Is any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President, this is extending the lease after 2017 an additional five years.
Any other?
I wish we would eventually get us some experts in on this type of leasing. Our attorney say he's great at contract law, but he don't know a thing about technology and telecommunications. And we, seriously though, we've had some people come before us who have expertise in this area, and it's going to get highly, highly competitive and highly, highly technical over the next few years. And I, one of the consultants that came said that it wouldn't cost us any money up front. They would get all their monies out of the savings that the city would get in these contracts and stuff. But at any rate, hopefully one day down the line, we'll consider hiring those people to come in and advise us. We got one guy in Minnesota who advised us on our Comcast contract. I'm not sure if anybody ever met the guy, but he's been doing that work for us for, I don't know how many years, ever since I can remember, but I'd like to have somebody that I could see every now and then and put my hands on to talk to, to take care of those type of contracts for us.
Yeah, I remember, Robert, when we started into this, to build the antenna, and everybody said we'd never pay for it, it'd never pay for itself, and went through all that, and that tower has been paid off a number of years that I remember. And all of a sudden, we had the $6 million bond issue on.
Upgrading.
Upgrading. We'd never in the world paid that off, and that gets paid off next year.
Next year.
So evidently, in our infinite wisdom within the council, we did pretty good.
We did fairly good.
But you know, it's the third extension, $18,000. I'm looking at these figures, a year, $20,000 a year, 22, 24, 26,000. That's pretty good money.
That's good, buddy, but I think we could probably do a lot better, and that's what the consultant came in and talked to us about. We do good, but we could do a heck of a lot better, so again...
But this way, we don't have to pay a consultant.
Well, we don't have to pay him then, but we won't get into that. Moving right along.
Need to vote?
Call for the vote.
Move to vote.
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Is any other new business? Department reports, committees? Is that your name in?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Council President, Councilman Mayor. I'm Kay Moore. I'm Director for Downtown Gadsden Incorporated, and, you know, when you see me up here, you pretty much know it's First Friday time again. I hope that this weather that they're promising us, and EMA back here's all assured me, it's going to stick around for a little while, so I hope they know what they're talking about. That's what they said. But, you know, the 4th of July probably was one of the best weather First Fridays we've ever had, a huge crowd with the fireworks from the Patriots Association, and just a lot of fun for everybody that day. So y'all come out Friday, August 1st. It is a, First Friday is a downtown merchants event. We encourage everyone to shop, shop local, to eat, and just enjoy. And while you do that, we're going to provide a lot of great music for you. We've got, this time, we've got Two Blue and the Lucky Stiffs, Kelly Johnson, Peanut and Mother Mayah, Andrea Davis, Uncle Kudzu, and Jess Goggins and the Magnetics. This starts all the way from, where are they? Is that what you're saying, Council? Okay.
No, he's talking to someone.
Is he talking to me?
No.
No. He's got a sidebar.
I got you. Okay. Anyway, so they start anywhere from Second Street all the way up to, in front of the Pittman Theater and across from the back, to the back 40. We're going to have a Pepsi Challenge. Have any of y'all seen that on TV? The Pepsi Challenge, where they do a Pepsi and Coke Challenge? So that'll be at Sixth and Broad. It'll be a lot of fun. Dr. Rowe and Carl Brady will be walking around doing man in the street interviews, talking about eating healthy and things. This is for her new television show. So that's going to be something that's new and different this time as well. So that's just going to be a lot of fun. Remember, no pets, no skateboards. We're trying to make this safe for everyone. And I think there might be an election. I keep hearing something about elections going on. Please, if you're going to come out, wear your T-shirts, but don't hand out pamphlets. We have a no pamphleteering because it ends up in the street, and that just makes it more for public works to clear up. So that's what, it's a great way to come out, though, and meet people and greet people, and so I encourage everyone to do that. So 6 o'clock till 9 o'clock Friday night, we'll close the streets, close Broad Street about 4:30. The classic cars will come rolling in. They actually start coming in about 2:00. But it's just a lot of fun. They bring a lot of people, so. First Friday is this Friday, and then Musical Mondays continues on with DJ Buster and Chef Curly. So if y'all haven't tried Musical Mondays from 11:30 to 1:30 at the Water Wall, that's another great event we've got going on. And then next weekend, we've got a sidewalk sale in conjunction with the World's Longest Yard Sale. Downtown Gadsden is having a sidewalk sale on Thursday, Friday, and Saturday. So it's just going to be a lot, a lot of good things going on, and I hope you will come out and enjoy your downtown, shop local. That's what makes our community stronger and makes it better.
Who's the band going to be playing at?
Amptiada.
That's Kerry Payne. He's next on the agenda. I will not steal his thunder because this is the big one. I'm not going to steal Kerry's thunder.
Okay.
But it's going to be a lot of fun. So 6 to 9, First Friday, come on down and shop and eat and sip and do everything you want to, and I guess Kerry, it's your time now. Thank y'all. I appreciate it.
Mr. President, Council, I've got a few things I want to tell you about. If Chad don't interrupt me like he did her, I'll get through them all. The summer concert, this is our fifth year, and I want to thank the mayor and the council for allowing us to do this. It's something that we started back five years ago, so, and this, this one is going to be the last one for the summer. We did tribute bands this year. If you remember me coming, talking to you back... We did tribute bands this year, if you remember me coming, talking to you back in May. And this one, uh, this Friday night will be the A1A Jimmy Buffett Official Tribute Band. We had them here a couple of years ago, and it was the biggest crowd that we had at the amphitheater. It was, I mean, generally standing room only. So, and this year, to add to it, the local Parrot Head Organization, 'cause there's a following, uh, there's several parrot heads around the United States. We had one from Atlanta come two years ago. But anyway, they're having a tailgate party in the amphitheater parking lot, starting at 6:30. It is sponsored by Little Bridge Marina and Local Joes, they're sponsoring the tailgate party. So if you wanna come down, uh, at, for the Parrot Head Tailgate Party, just come on out at 6:30 for that. A couple of other things I wanna mention to you, uh, 'cause the month of August, we have several events that'll be happening. Uh, of course, you got the Longest Yard Sale, that starts at Knockalilla Falls on August the 7th through the 10th. And something that's very important this time, I don't know if it's fail like this ever before, but school starts back that day. So up on the mountain, I'm hoping that the police, uh, department will put some extra patrol at Mitchell School and, uh, for those, Thursday and Friday of that week, because of school starting back, 'cause it's gonna be a congested area up at the falls. Also, an event that we're doing, or co-sponsoring, is the Dragon Boat Races, that will be, uh, down behind Chili's on August the 16th. So that'll be another event that the city is, uh, very big in supporting, and it's been successful the first few years that they have done that. So if you wanna come out and watch people, uh, go down the river and, and hurt the next day.
Or have a heart attack.
Yeah, come out and watch them, and, and along with that, I think the State Horseshoe Tournament is also that day over at Marina Park. So if you're interested in horseshoes, you can walk across the street and watch them throw horseshoes, and it'll be the best in the state. And we've got some local people here that are very good as well. Also, something new that's not been done in quite a while at Knockalilla Falls, if we're having, or co-sponsoring, a Cherokee Pow Wow up at the falls on August 29th and 30th. A local Cherokee group that been doing this in the Gunnersville area, found out somehow about Knockalilla Falls, came up, looked at it, and just thought it was an ideal place to do this, and of course, we agreed. So we're getting ready to have it, uh, at the end of the month. So we've got several different things going on, and, uh, as Kay mentioned about the First Friday, the summer concert is free as well. You can bring a cooler, cushion, come out, it's very family-friendly, family-oriented, and come out and have a good time. And the weather, we hope, will be nice as it was on July the 4th, it was very nice. Thank you.
We have with us today, Mrs. Gertie Low, who is, has a summer program that's, and just keeps getting bigger and bigger, I think. Gertie, you wanna come up and tell us something about it?
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman, to this board, uh, to our mayor of the city. This Council, I can't thank you enough on behalf of 100 children that attend our summer enrichment program every summer. This was our 13th year. We could not do it without the support of this city council and so many people in our city that's interested in our children. We have never charged a child a dime to attend summer school. We have a staff of 23, some are paid and some are volunteers. But it's because of the interest we have in our children, it takes a village to raise our children. And if we're gonna have people to replace you when you retire, they must be educated. We had a wonderful, wonderful summer, and I couldn't do it without the help of supporters, so many people, uh, like our Senator Phil Williams and Representative Craig Ford, who's always one of our great supporters, uh, Commissioner Choate, sister, Mr. Commissioner Carolyn Parker, uh, some churches in our city, uh, our speaker this year was, uh, one of the vice presidents from Auburn University, Dr. Villa, who was our great speaker that came to us this year. Uh, we were able to travel with our children. Some of our children, obviously about half of them come from single parent homes, they're not able to get out of the city. Uh, we are able every year to go someplace. This year, with the help of Bubba Masters and Regent's Bank, we went to Auburn, uh, University, we went to Miles College, we on the college tour. They encourage our kids to stay in school, we went to the Birmingham Zoo. City Councilman Hart from Birmingham is also a native of Gadsden, he's a big supporter of this program. But it's just so many people that have given their time, uh, I can't say enough about our superintendent, I'm glad to see him here this morning, I didn't expect that. But Mrs. Maness, who's a part of the Board of Education Staff. We had two teachers this year that they sent to us to help our children with their math, so they'll be a little bit above maybe their classmates, and then spend six weeks this summer in school, so I appreciate them so much. Our RSPP sent us a reading specialist, so we had a great, great summer. And I want everybody in our city to know that it takes a village to raise our children, and I appreciate your support.
Okay, remarks by the mayor and the council. Mayor, you wanna start?
Uh, yes, sir. I got a little something, I don't look at Facebook, I'm not a computer person, but every once in a while, somebody gives me something they feel like I need to know. And, uh, you know, right now, in the City of Gadsden, we got several commercial development projects somewhere along in the process to get them finalized, and a lot of them are underway, and it takes a while sometime. We, one I'm about to speak about took about two years. Anyway, uh, in the commercial real estate world, you really don't need to be talking about anything until the ink's dry and the deal is closed. And, uh, 'cause commercial is really, can be cutthroat sometime. When somebody finds out, some other person will come in, that's even got more money, and lure them away to another city. But, uh, you know, this person doesn't live in Gadsden, or in the Gadsden city limits, and was announcing on Facebook about one of our projects, which hasn't opened up, and the building's not even finished yet. And, uh, he gave the wrong address on West Megan Boulevard, which is over towards Wall Street. But, uh, you know, I don't know if they were trying to get credit for that for themselves, or what they were trying to do, but, uh, we'd appreciate it if, uh, you wanna know anything, come up here, we'd be glad to tell you about it, but we don't wanna put things all over the city, 'cause sometime they happen, sometime they fall through. But, uh, you know, we do have a lot of things going on, and, uh, we'd like to, uh, go about our business and take care of it, and then we can all, uh, have a good time and go visit it and see what happens. But, you know, sort of get tired of that stuff sometime. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Congratulations, uh, Dr. Low, on your summer enrichment program. It really is a, it really is a wonderful thing that you have started here, we hope that we can continue it for years and years and years to come. We will continue to support that program here, and I know several churches, as you mentioned, uh, contribute, uh, vehicles and transportation for the kids and all. So it's just a good community, uh, togetherness, you know, that this program is as, as successful as it is, so thank you again. The, uh, you know, we had the CMO, uh, mm, CMO, I'll get to that in a minute. We had EMA, uh, represented today here, and they have gotten an award, and I'll tell you, you know, I, I don't know how long ago it was, three years ago maybe, that we, we, we resurfaced, uh, we surfaced this issue, you know, that we did not, we didn't think that we had enough safe places in the City of Gadsden, when we were having extremely bad weather, and since we did that, EMA has come along, and they have, they have, they have gone and, and identified places that people can go to in the city and in the county, and they're continuing to work on that. And I just say, thank you, EMA, for the work that you do, because what you do saves, has the potential of saving lives, and, and we thank you for that. Uh, Litchfield Middle School, I'll continue to ask you to support that school, uh, they need your community involvement. They don't need just teachers, they, they don't need just, uh, this council, or, or, or anyone else, or just the board. They need the whole community to be involved in that school, so that we can take it to the level that it should be at. And I'm asking everybody to please, please, uh, get to Litchfield and see what you, you can do, you can do. Not what you want someone else to do, but what you can do to improve, to help to improve the conditions that we have in Litchfield. And I understand, you know, that, that have been a lot of improvements that have occurred in Litchfield over the last few years, but we, we want to get to the next level. So thank you for, for being, uh, available to help us to get there. Uh, Boys and Girls Club in East Gadsden, I see that Mr. Williams is here, uh, I continue to encourage you to get, uh, to get involved with the Boys and Girls Club. Yeah, some of you know that we had the misfortune of having the Boys and Girls Club closed, because of whatever reasons, and we, you know, some of us know those reasons, some don't. But the fact is, we have a new Boys and Girls Club over there now, and it's not under the auspices of the old Northeast Boys and Girls Club. So, yeah, like Dr. Low said, it takes the whole community to, for this program to be successful. So if you're in that area, or if you're not in the area, and you need to be, uh, 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 be aware of what the kids are doing and what's going on at the Boys and Girls Club, visit there and see what you can do to help them there. I will be going to Montgomery on August 12th, I believe it is, to receive my certification, uh, in the advanced, uh, uh, city, city officials, uh, I, we, we completed the, the regular course, which, which requires 40 hours, uh, two years ago. So now we have done the other 40 hours to, uh, so that we can get the advanced certification for, for city officials. So I thank you all for allowing me the opportunity to go to those meetings, you know, the Alabama League Municipalities, and the training and stuff that we have gotten over the past four years, so thank you for that.
That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. President, just a couple of, of items. Mayor, I, I'm not sure if you can use that I Don't Read Facebook intro anymore, this is three weeks in a row, I believe, so.
I've only talked about two things, there's about 30 that I know.
Yeah, you should see this list you got over there.
It's, it's, it's interesting, I won't, I just encourage people to really, really deep dive into the details, uh, kind of, you know, there's, there's an old saying, very old saying, actually, get it from the horse's mouth. Uh, so I encourage people, you know, you find out who the, the executive directors or department heads for these various groups are, and, and get that information directly from them, because there's just a lot of, uh, armchair quarterbacks out there who, uh, who would have you believe that they understand it. Uh, and, and to some degree, you know, let's be, let's be even-handed, to some degree, they do understand quite a bit. But, uh, but again, the folks that are actually being paid to do it, let's, uh, you know, let's, let's get the, let's get the understanding from them. Um, Ms., Ms. Low, again, I don't wanna beat a dead horse with a stick, but I don't think enough can be said about the great work that you've done. And, uh, you know, I don't wanna get, you know, all mushy and call you Mama Gertie up here in front of all these folks, but I, I think I just did, didn't I? But, but that's okay, that's okay, I, I appreciate the hard work that you do, you've, uh, your efforts have sparked a lot of efforts throughout the city. I think there's, and throughout the county, there's a, there's a mirror, uh, program to some degree and a talent that, uh, you know, that has followed your, your example and followed that template. So again, the, the, great work, continue to keep up the good work, and whatever you did to get Bubba Masters to pay for a trip to Auburn, keep doing it. 'Cause if you don't know, Bubba is a huge Alabama guy. He's a huge Alabama guy, and he's probably not gonna appreciate me saying that on television, but, uh, you got him to pay for a trip to Auburn, that's, that's, that's impressive. That's really. Oh, he's, he's already done that, okay, alright. Mike, great job, Mike Bryant, EMA, and, and your team, awesome job. I've had the opportunity over the last four years to watch you guys up close and in person, awesome job, awesome job. I, you know, we, we're fortunate from a, from a, from a topography standpoint to, uh, and I don't, I'm not gonna wood, not jinx it, but, you know, we're, we're fortunate in that historically, we've been able to, to avoid some of the major, uh, issues. But, uh, but that doesn't mean that we don't have to be prepared, and that department is very prepared. I've watched them up close and in person, and what they do in, in, in those moments of crisis goes above and beyond what is actually called of them. So again, I appreciate it, appreciate both you, Mike, and your staff, definitely. And, uh, and of course, Dr. Miller, do wanna recognize you, thank you for committing, you know, in person, uh, to earmarking those monies for, for technology. I think that's, that's key, and, and that, that's important. Uh, that some of the, some of the better school systems in the, in the state, um, have a huge technology footprint. Uh, and I think it's important for us, where we're not there, it's important for us to try to get there. Uh, so again, thank you for that, that level of commitment, and I also wanna thank you for listening. Um, you know, we've, uh, we've had a lot of dialogue over the last two or three weeks about education and, and where we can go in terms of edu, edu, in, in terms of our staff, I wanna thank you for listening. Uh, I think, I think some of the part, points have been heard and, and, and taken into consideration, so I appreciate that. Couple of other points before I, I pass it on, um, the, um, I do wanna, you know, give a good well wish to my good friend, Mike McCain, who, uh, has, uh, has been going through a, a health battle here recently. So I do wanna publicly, um, wish him well and, uh, and, and a speedy recovery. Uh, if, for those of you who don't know, Mike McCain is the Executive Director of our Industrial Development Authority. And that's one of the, what I like to consider the three, three, maybe four pieces of our, uh, industrial, uh, development and economic development mechanism. The IDA with Mike, uh, the Gadsden Commercial Development Authority with Lisa Osborne, who does a great job, uh, Downtown Gadsden, many have a CK, but don't realize how integral they are to helping us develop this city. And then, of course, we have, um, then, of course, we have the Chamber, who does a great job supporting businesses in the, in the area. So, um, so a, as we continue to use that mechanism, let's not forget something that the mayor said earlier. Uh, where we sometimes get overlooked as a, uh, as a city, it's not because we're not out there pounding the pavement. We're consistently a finalist for a lot of this stuff, uh, but it's not because we're not out there pounding the pavement and making it happen. A lot of it has to do with the fact that our, our workforce, and this is a problem throughout the state of Alabama, but our workforce is not prepared to take on some of these high-tech positions. And again, you know, I, I'm, I'm glad Dr. Miller's here, because it's important that we start that, um, in, in our school system, and prepare our kids for the jobs of tomorrow, not today, but the jobs of tomorrow, because tomorrow's econ, economy, again, you've heard me say it before, is gonna be math and science oriented, and so our kids, it's important that our kids be prepared for that. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. President, I, I have a list here too, but the mayor says something that, uh, I'll do my list next week, but he said something that disturbs me. I, I get, I, I too, Mayor, don't do Facebook, uh, follow that crap, I mean, that stuff. But when you have an individual who says that, you know, well, he gives the wrong address, he, he, he don't live in the city, first of all. He tells you all about all this stuff going on in the city, and he don't know the east from the west. But yet and still, he's got four or five people who are running for public office against council members up here, the same individual. I, I mean, I, I don't play games with folks, don't live in the city, didn't wanna give the people in this city an opportunity to vote on seven-day sales. That same individual that the mayor's talking about, I get those same things, Mayor, you, you being nice, I don't have to be nice. You know, 'cause, 'cause my people don't cotton to Tea Parties anyway, number one. And, and that's what he is, a Tea Party person. And so you can get upset with me, you can get mad all you want to, if you're a member of the Tea Party, I don't care. 'Cause that, that individual hadn't done anything for my community, but yet all of a sudden, now he's interested in my community, to help my community. Where have you been all this time? And again, he still don't know east from west. But all of a sudden, he's very interest, interested in getting his folks here to take over city government. You're gonna be hearing a lot, and I don't wanna do campaigning from here, I don't do it from here. I got a radio program that comes on Monday, Wednesdays, and Fridays, from 12:30 to 1:00, is for campaigning. Please listen, tune in to WMGJ. I'll tell you some names, and I'll tell everything I know. See, I'm just like a broken refrigerator, I can't keep nothing. And again, I'm not obligated to those individuals, 'cause they ain't giving me one penny. And all they're trying to do is destroy this city, and they don't know east from west, and then you want to support those people that they're supporting? We got some serious problems, but we'll talk about it later, I'm through, sorry.
Uh, I don't have anything political to say today. I would like to announce that, uh, Johnny Cannon and I, districts, uh, have a community center that's right on the, our borderline there between District 5 and 6, so we're gonna have a joint, uh, District 5 and District 6 meeting tonight. And I'll let Johnny tell you all about it, he's, he's, he's the workhorse behind all of it.
He made all the ice cream.
And I'm gonna make some ice cream too.
Tonight, from 5:30 to 6:30 at Banks Park, we'll be having homemade ice cream fellowship for District 5 and 6. Uh, we've got some live entertainment that's gonna last just one hour, so you better get there early, 'cause I don't know how much homemade ice cream's gonna be there, and I know all the people that's coming at, in District 6, that I know that's already excited about. about this, and they're ready to come eat the ice cream and hear the entertainment. It's a Coosler River Bob. He's performed all over town here. He's an older gentleman. He's really good at it. You just have to come out and hear him play his blues. He's got rock, he does 60s, 70s, jazz, you name it. Coosler River Bob can do it. So looking forward to seeing everybody out there tonight at 5:30 at Banks Park. It's going to last one hour. That's all I got.
I tell you what, I got so many notes over here that I've scratched off. Y'all talk about everything in the world. We'll be having a meeting in my district, but it won't have ice cream, won't have a band. We'll just be door to door facing each other every day. That's political, that's it. We ain't having no meeting.
Political at the pavilion?
No, it'll be door to door. Yeah. But it won't be no ice cream. Let me tell y'all why I abstained on...
Because you don't know how to make ice cream. That's what it is.
And besides that, I'm too cheap to buy it. I abstained on the vote, simply because my wife is a retiree of the city, and we, I think Johnny and I were advised not to vote on it, so we just abstained. I've always been for retirees. My goodness, I live with one of them, so I wouldn't do that in the world. I do have something really important I want to read to y'all because it includes y'all. This is coming from the State of Alabama Historical Commission, and I believe you had one, didn't you, Billy, on Cemetery?
Yeah, we have one over at Sixth Street.
Clayton Cemetery, Dwight Avenue, Gadsden, Etowah County, Alabama. The Alabama Historical Commission is pleased to inform you that the above referenced cemetery has been added to the Alabama Historic Cemetery Register. Now, the people at Northeast Alabama Genealogical Society, Jenny, I got all the way through that without it.
How about that?
Did all the work on this. Rosemary and Julia and that group, and they got it on the register. The people who do the maintenance and upkeep is Alabama City Historical Association. We are destined, or what we do is try to preserve the history of Alabama city. So that being said, I want to openly say that donations are welcome, and you can send them to me or the Alabama City Historical Association at PO Box 1042, 35904. Anyway, that's a great thing, and y'all did back me on this Clayton Cemetery, and I want to tell y'all I do appreciate it.
I'll entertain them over to the Wizz, Jerry.
Summer.